And if you would all stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, couldn't we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Elumbas.
Here.
Ingles.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Filkins.
Here. At this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Al Sacana.
Councilmember Elumbas.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes, motion carries. We'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name for the clerk and have your comments be three minutes or less, that would be greatly appreciated.
Good evening, my name is Justin Eckelbecker. I, for the sake of time, I'm gonna read some stuff out of the newspaper. I'm gonna read what it says are the key points. I'm going to, for the sake of time, assume that this is correct. It says that "Key changes to the sign ordinance: changing the number of days allowed for the removal of a temporary sign related to an event from a range of five to ten days to seven days; establishing a maximum number of temporary signs for residential properties at four; establishing a maximum number of temporary signs for commercial properties at two; establishing a maximum area of temporary signs for residential property of four square feet." If I read into here farther, it seems, if I understand this correctly, that it's saying four square feet for one sign and a maximum of four signs, so sixteen square feet. It also says "Establishing a minimum distance between the temporary signs of ten feet and ten feet from the right-of-way line." I really just came here to voice my concern that I would think that this might, you know, possibly stifle political speech, that, I don't know if that's the goal or not, but I think that it could stifle political speech. I think also, you know, everybody has their own opinions and views, but I think that it seems that around here, there seems to be, you know, like, right-to-life signs, things like that. I would assume that most of those might not be temporary, but I would also think that, you know, like, I have a Jesus sign in my yard, and it's definitely probably a temporary style sign. So, I've, I thought of things like, you know, maybe if, maybe if you guys are running, that maybe I would want one for, for Robert Ingles, and maybe I'd want one for Stephen King, and then maybe I'd want one for Carla, and, you know, and then maybe I have my Jesus one, but then maybe I decide to put one up for the prosecutor, you know? So I just think that it's kinda dangerous ground here to, to limit the number. I understand that maybe there may have been some problems, but I think that as a whole, that we need to consider the consequences of, of what might come from this, of not, you know, and I know that some communities already do this, like Midland, I think, does this, and that it's been this way for a long time. I don't know exactly how long, I've heard, a couple decades, you know? But I think that we should really assess that and be really careful, real wary, on voting for changes that maybe could limit political speech. So, that's, that's about all I have tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Glenn Kengus, of 2420 North Boulevard, Cadillac, Michigan. I've had various signs in front of my house for the last five years, and all of a sudden, there, there has been, has been stated that there's a complaint about my signs, and they're gonna change the ordinance because of them. I have written down a few questions and statements concerning my sign display. Question number two: Has this proposal or amendment to temporary signs been reached at this time?
We can't answer, no. Mr. Kengus, the public-
Hello, is my signs illegal, according to what's been reached?
Mr. Kengus, the public comment is for you to be able to comment and provide your comments to the council, but we are not going to answer any questions during public comment.
So I'm not gonna be able to know if my signs are legal or not when I leave here? Is that correct?
There is a public hearing coming up later in this meeting.
Okay, let me read the rest of my stuff, then, if you're not gonna answer my questions. I am gonna read question three, but I understand you're not gonna answer it. "If you take away my freedom of speech protected by my signs, where do I go from here to the protected amendment, number one of the Constitution?" Question number one that I ignored up to now: I think TV 9 and 10 Fake News has turned in a complaint about my signs, because I put a sign out there about them, and I've never had a complaint in five years about my signs. So here's what I wrote down. Has, question number one, which you're not gonna answer: Has TV 9 and 10 Fake CBS News been a complainant of my signs on my property? I have no, I have had no complaints in five years until I put the 9 and 10 Fake News sign out there. Okay, that's all the questions. Statement number two: You, as the city of Cadillac, are taking away my freedom of speech while TV 9 and 10 News is allowed to continue with their fake news. Statement number three: My signs report the destruction of America by Biden and the Democrats while TV 9 and 10 Fake CBS News ignore it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Sari. I'm at 201 Iroquois, and I think you're doing a good job trying to change the sign ordinance, but maybe you haven't addressed enough even. You know, temporary signs isn't defined very well in the documents I've received, anyway. And are you gonna address the stability of a sign, or the, you know, whether it's made out of cardboard, how well it's gonna stand up to the weather? You know, right now, I just saw Viking signs put up on the fence at the, at the football field. Is that gonna be a temporary sign that's allowed or not allowed, or, you know, it's hard enough to define that. I know none of us wanna address the content and say you can't violate freedom of speech, but it's sometimes a proliferation of hatred we're against. You know, a Nazi sign, et cetera, we're against seeing some of that, or vulgarity. We've had a number of signs that were very vulgar in the last few months, and we've had the city go after them and ask them to remove them. And it's hard to define the content of a sign, but I think you're doing a good job, and keep at, keep at it.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on August 16th, and so looking for a motion to approve that consent agenda at this time.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Oh, and I apologize, it also includes the minutes from our closed session meeting on that same date of August 16th.
Support.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Elumbas.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Can I interrupt one time?
No, sir, you can't. Sandy? The motion was made. To approve that, okay. Okay, good. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Elumbas.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have a public hearing, and so I'm going to turn it to Marcus, the city manager, to go ahead and introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. In our public agenda packet, we do have a council communication, which I appreciate if you would humor me as I, as I read through it. Our development director is stuck in transit, flying in with the storms and whatnot this afternoon, which is why he's not here this evening, otherwise to present the information. But the communication, I think, does a pretty fair job in describing why we're looking at, considering the changes that we're looking at considering. And it says as follows: "The text amendment to the city zoning ordinance, which is on the agenda this evening for a public hearing and possible action, addresses the issue of temporary signs. One of the primary reasons why this matter was raised is to bring this section of the city zoning ordinance into compliance with Supreme Court case Reed versus Town of Gilbert, which requires content neutrality." Our current temporary sign-related ordinance in our zoning code is not based on content neutrality, but rather the opposite. It's all based on, or most of it is based on content, whether it's political content or content regarding, you know, advertising for real estate signs, so this, this nullifies all of that. It makes it moot, and it makes it in compliance with Reed versus Gilbert. The Supreme Court in this case essentially says you cannot regulate signs differently based upon what they say, which is content, and as I just mentioned, the city's current temporary sign ordinance does contain regulations that regulate signs differently due to their content, such as real estate signs, political signs, trailer or mobile signs, et cetera. The second reason for this proposed zoning amendment is that our current ordinance does not address how many temporary signs can be placed on property, the size of those signs, and there have been several related complaints called in that have prompted us to reevaluate this section of code. I actually had a conversation with one of the city attorneys earlier today, Mike Homier, who's not with us this evening. Cody Mott is here with us this evening, representing the office, and Mike had mentioned that while the current proposed number is four, he said that doesn't stop anybody from actually having them double-sided, meaning you could hypothetically have eight different, different messages or different sayings or whatnot within the signs that are, that are within someone's, someone's yard. This amendment amends Section 46-664 of our zoning ordinance regarding temporary use signs, and it addresses both of the issues that I just explained. The amendment places all temporary signs into one category, which would then create content neutrality. It also establishes regulations regarding size, placement, and a number of signs. Temporary signs in the city will no longer be regulated differently based on content. And then there are some key points that I'm gonna read as follows. It does clarify that the number of days for the removal of a temporary sign related to an event is now seven days versus a range of five to 10 days. It also establishes a maximum number of temporary signs for residential property to four. It establishes a maximum number of temporary signs for commercial property to two. It establishes a maximum area of temporary signage for residential property to four square feet. It establishes a minimum distance between temporary signs of 10 feet, as well as a minimum setback distance of 10 feet from a right-of-way line. I had a question posed to me earlier this afternoon from a resident that asked me specifically about that right-of-way line separation requirement, and I didn't, I didn't provide him with the necessarily correct answer, but the correct answer that I later found out was more about creating clear vision between the road right-of-way and vehicular traffic, and to not create conflict in between, which is why we're looking at having that setback of 10 feet from the, from the right-of-way. And just, just for clarification, signs that you might see today that are on telephone poles, or that are within the city's right-of-way, all of those are illegal, and we do our best, in fact, our sign guy happens to be sitting at the, at the table over there, we do our best with respect to picking up those signs, especially when we receive phone calls about, hey, you know, there's a sign that's clearly in the, in the road right-of-way, can you, you know, knock on the door, can you, can you remove it? We remove those. We do not go on private property and touch anybody's signs. Allowing single-family residential properties to have up to two off-site temporary signs on private property for the purpose of directing the public to a residential activity is also something that we're recommending in the change that's before you this evening. So the perfect example of that is if you're having a garage sale, or an estate sale, or there's an open house for your property because, you know, you're trying to sell it, and you're trying to direct people, you know, to, to your property for those purposes, that would now be a legitimate use. You talk to your neighbor down, down the street, hey, can I, you mind if I stick a sign in your yard, you know, directing people to my house because I'm having this activity happening this weekend? That would now be something that you could do. Otherwise, it's something that if, if it was just out there, and somebody were to call in, or we somehow were to notice it, you would risk having the sign being picked up. A question that came to you just a few minutes ago during the general opportunity for public comment from one of our residents regarding, you know, whether or not, if council took action as it's presented tonight, would that mean that my signs have to go away? The clear answer to that is no. The signs that go away would be whatever signs that would be above and beyond the maximum number that council would determine would be permissible for, for this ordinance. And in regard to council deliberation and discussion, I just wanna throw out a couple of things for you guys to keep in the back of your minds. While we are trying to bring ourselves into compliance, there's, you know, no mandate requiring that you do it this evening. If city council feels like you wanna hit the pause button, you can certainly do that. If city council wishes to basically remand it back to staff for further analysis, if you wanna see what the proliferation of signs looks like throughout this fall during the municipal election period, to, you know, to, you know, frankly see for yourself if there is or isn't any other issues, and then we bring it back later this year, that's an option. If city council, you know, wishes to remand it back to the planning commission for some reason, you can certainly do that as well. I don't know if there's necessarily a reason to do that, but that's certainly an option as well. City council wants to make an adjustment and then approve it as, as adjusted, that's an option. City council wishes to approve it as presented, certainly, that's an option. And if city council wishes to say, you know, thank you, but no thank you, and essentially kill it, that's an option as well, although the city attorney might say, look, we still might need to bring it back at some point regarding the non-compliance issues with, with the Supreme Court. But I just wanted to make sure that before you open it up the floor again for additional public comment, and then take it back for discussion purposes, city council has the background as to why we're, why we're doing it, and, and what your options are. Another correlation back to our current sign code, one, there's no limitation, that, at least that I could see on signs, and I could, on numbers of signs, I could be wrong, but I don't believe that there is. And two, with regard to spatial separation, that doesn't, that doesn't really apply either, which is why we're, we're trying to create some framework in talking with our development director. Again, arguably, you could put, you know, a sign right now up against the, the right-of-way, which, as he said, does create potential clear vision issues, sight distance issues between pedestrians, motorcyclists, and bicyclists alike. So pushing it back the 10 feet was a recommendation, and also something that was picked off from a sample of code from another community in Michigan that he used as, as a reference point. So unless there's any questions direct to me at this point, I-
Just one quick one. What does the right-of-way line look like in, in most places? I thought, I thought it had to be like four foot back. Can you explain that, the line?
Yeah, so-
Like when we move signs that are too close to the road?
So, the, I may not be able to give you exactly what you're asking for, but I can tell you that typically, the crown of the road is 33 feet from the road right-of-way. The road right-of-way, depending upon where you live, you may have a sidewalk there. That, that grass area, including the sidewalk, is all considered public right-of-way.
And if there is no sidewalk, how far from the curb, like?
I believe it is about, about four feet.
Four feet, okay.
So.
And now, and currently, the rule is it can't be in the right-of-way, so-
Correct.
Basically, a four-foot setback.
Correct. So, yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. We'll have time to discuss after-
Yeah, oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so at this time, we're gonna go ahead and open public comment specific to this public, public hearing, and during this comment period, we do provide six minutes. If someone has something, you know, more prepared and has more information to provide to the council, we will give you that six minutes, so it-
Can't answer questions, though?
Correct. The other rules still apply, that we are not going to have a conversation with anyone that comes forward, but we would like to listen to your input on this public hearing.
Well, I won't need six minutes, but I'd just like to reiterate that I really urge the council to at least, you know, if, as he mentioned, if you're not gonna approve this, then you need to, you know, I would think that you need to at least consider this later, at a later date, that this, as, as the current amendment stands, I would urge you to vote against it. I would think that, like I said, and really like Mr. Kengus said, it stifles the First Amendment free speech of the residents of this area, and I've, you know, I, I listened to what you guys had to say, and I could understand that maybe there would be some issues, but I think that as the current amendment stands, that it should not pass, so I urge you to vote against that. I would also like to say, you know, this is kind of a matter of opinion, so to say, but I would like to say that, you know, four square feet, so that's two foot by two foot, and I would think that even at four feet, if that was four feet back from the right-of-way, that, if I understand correctly, that means behind the sidewalk, then that, that would not impede vision. So I just wanna kind of point that out, and then I, I know I can't really ask a question and get an answer, so, but I'm, but I noticed when I read the article that there wasn't really a clear answer on whether that includes a flag or not. It seemed that maybe the answer in the article was kind of that it, maybe it wouldn't include an American flag, or maybe it wouldn't include a, a Michigan flag, but it sounds like it might include a "Don't Tread on Me" flag. It, you know, I think in the article, the text said something like, it depended on the message the flag conveyed, you know? And I understand, I do understand that, you know, I don't want-
Do you want to address the council and not the audience, please?
Okay. I apologize. But I do understand that, you know, I don't want any Nazi flag out there either. But I think that when you make a blanket-style ordinance to cover all kinds of things, and I understand the Supreme Court ruling, that the Supreme Court ruling says that you can't differentiate anything, but I think that when you make a blanket-style ordinance that covers all of this, that it can really impede on people's freedoms. So I just, like I say, I wanna really reiterate that I think at this time, at the very least, the council should, you know, vote to reconsider or something of that line. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanna tell you about one statement I forgot to make. Hundreds of people over the five-year period have stopped by to thank me for my signs, and people have honked their horns continuously, and, and gave me the thumbs up about my signs, and I've only had a few obscene gestures from people.
Thank you.
John Sari again. The proliferation of signs over the years has always been considered a form of pollution, and we've regulated businesses and residences alike. Too many signs, we think, is an eyesore, and I think that's what you're trying to address here, not so much content, we can't address content, but, you know, the durability of a sign, is it gonna blow away into the neighbor's yard, or blow across the street and cause a traffic hazard? We've had a number of portable triangle signs on sidewalks downtown blow into streets, and that's a problem. We need to address the stability of signs, not the content of a sign. You know, the long-lasting of a sign, it shouldn't be cardboard, it's just melted away in a few rains, looks like heck. And I think you're hurting the property values by allowing a proliferation of signs in residential neighborhoods. You know, we've always been against too many signs, and I think that's what you need to address, the size and the number of signs.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing anyone else, we'll close public comment, and, okay?
As I sit here, my name's Kevin Dewey from Chico's, and I know I'm from the West Side, but I just wanna make a comment about, I've been down at the Long Road quite a bit this summer, and also down at the farmer's market, and one thing that I, I think about is there's all the political signs and stuff like that you're talking about. I'm talking about more of a growing the business, and what's good for the community and stuff. When I'm down at the farmer's market and I, I put my flag out there, it draws people down there, you know? You could say it's a distraction, but then when you look at other signs that I see, the big banner that says Farmer's Market across the street, that's a huge distraction. I mean, as you're driving down, you're looking up and you see the banner there. So a little fluttering sign, you know, I mean, where, where do you draw the line? Is it okay for the big one to go across the main street versus the fluttering one that's, you know, drawing people down to the farmer's market? We're kind of doing the same thing. So what's good for the one across, but the little fluttering sign that I have at the Long Road, which is also another new business that's opening up, that opened up, trying to draw attention in there, way back 20 feet into the, from the road, right-of-way, you know, it just, you know, it seems like we're, it's targeting people, you know, and, you know, because right in there, it said, no fluttering. Well, when I look at fluttering, I see my sign, it was a fluttering sign, so, but you guys got a tough decision, I, I just wanna throw my two cents out, but, you know, I, I think it does hurt the businesses, too, especially when, as you're going down the main street, you see open signs and, you know, sticking out and stuff like that. They're just trying to draw business or customers in, so, but that's all I got.
Thank you. Could you state your full name?
Kevin Dewey.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion or questions amongst the council. I have a question about flags, the American flag that was brought up during public comment. Can we talk about that?
Yeah, so there's, there's actually no clear guidance on the difference between signs and flags. The Supreme Court has kind of gone back and forth at times, saying that flags are a different entity, especially the, the flag of the United States, and at times, they've regulated them as such as signs. So I don't have a clear answer from you from a legal standpoint on how you can regulate signs any differently from flags, and I don't believe your ordinance has addressed that typically in the past, so that's really open to your interpretation at this point.
Thank you.
So, um, the, the, what Mr. Dewey brought up for his, for his, the taco truck for Chico's, it's a flag, it's, is it one of those signs that moves around, or is it a flag?
This is straight-up flagging.
Yeah, would that be considered fluttering if it's a, and be prohibited, somebody that might have the information of this? Because that kind of, who would have that answer?
Mike, would you like that?
Would you know, Mike?
Would you like to address that question?
I don't.
He doesn't want to, but-
The simple answer I would give is yes.
To which part?
That it's a fluttering-
A fluttering sign.
And why did that get put in? That, so that's my question. What is the purpose of that? What was the thinking behind putting that in?
My biggest interpretation is our ordinance clearly under prohibited signs, mentions- mentions signs that in a number of ways could potentially be a distraction to drivers.
What would be the setback requirement if someone was putting in a flag pole?
Flag poles, if it has an American sign, they are basically exempt.
So you could put it four feet from the road?
They are addressed in a different section of the sign ordinance, specifically under exempt.
For a flag pole?
What about the...
The American flag?
With an American flag. You can also have an other type of flag, and it specifically mentions it, but it has to accompany an American flag to be exempt.
Now, it's exempt in the way that it still has to be four feet from the road? I mean, it's not exempt from everything?
I mean, I, I would, I would interpret that as yes.
But someone could put, put the flag pole as long as they had an American flag on it four feet from the road? A actual permanent?
Yeah, I just need a little more clarification on that, Mike?
Yeah.
So, um, if we said it was an American flag, and then if it was a service member's or a veteran's flag that was flying underneath for their branch of service, are neither of those flags then counted in the four signs that a resident can have in their yard?
So I, I think that's where the city attorney tonight was saying, as, as did Mike Omer at your last meeting. There is no clear legal guidance on that at this point. We all know what the American flag is, and that the American flag is not, is not a sign. But when it comes to other things that happen to fly on a flag pole, uh, the, you know, we, we might decide to be the community to challenge that legally and create a novel case, but, but the reality is that those may be construed as signs, or they may not be construed as signs. And that when other communities across our country have had challenges brought, um, forward from members of their constituency that either, you know, they don't like what they're seeing flying on the flag poles or, or whatnot, uh, they, you know, they, they tend to lose when the city challenges then the people flying whatever it is that they're flying that happens to offend somebody that brought the complaint in. And so, you know, that's, that's where you're not gonna have that clear information, probably ever, until there is another novel case out there that provides the, you know...
Right, and it, and I'm not disagreeing with it, but Mike made a statement that if it's flown with the American flag, then that flag is exempt too, and I don't know that I agree with that.
Yeah, and that, that statement may or may not be correct. I think what, what, I think we can go so far as to say is that the placement of the pole in and of itself, along with the American flag, is outside of the section of code that you're being asked to consider this evening.
Okay, thank you.
It's in a different, the American flag is in a different section of sign code.
So, so we don't confuse too many issues and look to Cody on this. Flag pole's a permanent structure, that could fall under a whole different form of regulation in the city for what you need to permit, especially because it's a permanent fixed structure in relation to a right-of-way, et cetera. I don't want that to be confused with the sign issue, 'cause that's a permanent structure that you're putting in that could be regulated under other ordinance.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that, because I think one of my main points is once you have an acceptable flag pole installed, either whether it's in the ground or on your house, I'd be hesitant to regulate any flag that was, that was put up that, that flag pole, or even count that as a sign ordinance. I don't think those are the type of things that contribute to blight. Like when, when a yard's, at a certain point, when a yard is full of a bunch of things, um, you have, you have an argument that it's a distraction. I, I mean, I like the, the size of the signs being four square feet. I think, you know, a ten or twenty square foot sign would be a distraction. I'm not sure that the number of signs is, is practical. As you pointed out, you may have several candidates. And, and I don't know if it's a distraction if you have a large enough yard to, to put several political signs up. There are several of the same signs. Um, I, you know, with the minimum distance between temporary signs of ten feet and the minimum setback from the right-of-way line, I think, um, that type of thing needs more clarification for, for discussion, like even when, like we all put our signs out, and I don't think any of them are ten, I try not to put them ten feet back from the right-of-way, I try to put them four feet back, and I don't necessarily think they're distracting. And I think if they were ten foot back in some of those places, it'd be pointless to put one there.
It'd be scary.
And if you were a person who was trying to put a political sign out there, you would effectively be prevented with your ten-foot setback. So I, you know, I don't, um, think that is, you know, necessary, and, or even well explained. You know, 'cause on, on my house, I'm on Cass Street, I'm, you know, I don't put anything between the sidewalk and the road, I always assume that's the right-of-way, but I don't know what ten feet back from the right-of-way looks like. I mean, I have a wall next to my sidewalk, and I, and, you know, that's, I think it's ten feet. If I, if I didn't have a driveway there, it wouldn't be ten feet. I don't, I don't know how everybody else's house is, but, um, I think that should be better explained to people. Um, I think, you know, four signs, um, seems, you know, not enough, like you said, especially during the political season. Um, I'm perfectly fine with the, the temporary, you know, sign changing it from a range to seven days, that seems to make good sense. You know, the size of signs is definitely important. You know, the commercial property, you know, I don't, I think, I don't have a problem with that. But I think a couple of these things I do have a problem with, and, and I would, you know, be opposed to this as it is, and I think we need to explain some things and possibly work out some different numbers. And with, with the flags and the flag pole, that once, like I said, once you have, I'm not in favor of regulating, of stopping the, the flags that people are upset about. I know there are, um, flags in town with obscenities on them, but they, they are displayed as flags. They're, um, they're on, flag poles attached to houses, or they're on flag poles that are permanently installed. You know, they're definitely flown as flags. And I think it'd be, it'd be, um, I mean, to give someone a pass because there's an American flag with whatever flag they decide, or to give some, not give someone a pass because they don't wanna fly the American flag with their flag, doesn't seem to make sense, um, either. So I, I, you know, the flag issue is important, um, an important part of this, that we don't, that I don't think we should count flags as signs, um, unless they're in the yard with, you know, two poles or with, you know, unless they're not displayed as, as a flag. And I know, like you said, that there may or may not be a good definition of flag, you know, a flowing object or whatever you wanna, you know, but I, I think we can nail that down and then enforce our intent, and, and, you know, hopefully the language is there to support that.
So, good points, and I think I can help with the conversation, or at least I'm gonna try to help with, with council's conversation. Um, back with the flag thing. The, we won't have a clear legal definition as to how, other than the American flag, which we already know doesn't count, as to how all of these other flags either count or don't count in terms of signage. Uh, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't want council to get bogged down in that tonight, 'cause it's not even the section of code that you're looking at. So the section of code that you're looking at is about the temporary signage, temporary signs. Those that you're more familiar with would be signs that people, you know, stick up, whether they're having it made or they're hand-making them, and they're just, they're just displaying them, you know, in, in their yards and, and whatnot, that kind of a thing.
So is the temporary sign in the intent of the person, how long they, they wanna display it, or is it in the construction of the sign?
It's in the number. We can't get into, we're not getting into the, um, you know, what it's made out of, you know, whether it's fabricated, it's not about...
It's how long you intend to display it.
Well, right, it's, it's that, and it's if you look at, if you look at the Schedule D in your packets, so it's the number of signs, the maximum area, the height, so it gives you the, it gives you all of those parameters, the spacing between them. So all we're looking at doing is regulating the signs based upon how big or small they are, how far apart they are from one another, and how many we're allowing on any, on the property. That, that's what, that's what we're looking at. Now, if council wants to say, "Look, four is too little, let's make it seven, let's make it six." I mean, pick, pick another, right? That's, that's, that's totally okay, council can do that. What council can't do is say, "Well, we're okay with four during the year other than when it's thirty days or sixty days outside of an election." Because once you do that, now you're regulating it based upon content. And the reason why there's that correlation is 'cause you're correlating your regulation to a political activity. So that's, that's the example I'm using. So if, if you think that you'd wanna see eight signs up at any point in the year, if that's the number, right, then, then set that as the number. You can still keep these other parameters arguably the same. If somebody can't fit eight signs ten feet apart from one another, then that's gonna restrict them to whatever the number's gonna be, uh, based upon their, their yard. If we think, and when I say "we," I'm really referring to council. If council says, "You know what, we understand that we need to have some clear vision setbacks between the right-of-way and where these signs go, but we think that ten feet is too far, we wanna make it five feet, or we wanna make it six feet, or we wanna make it four feet." Oh, okay. I mean, you, you absolutely have it within your, your purview to make that change. So those were the three things, um, councilmember, that you, you brought up. So trying to help facilitate, you know, good conversation between the...
Let me remember, I might be wrong, but...
Yeah, sure.
For me, I thought the original plan was to put a small dent in the blight in this town. And those signs are a small part, but nonetheless a blight. And we, that's my major complaint I get from people wherever I go, when it, what do we do? This, this, it's, there's too many people in this town that aren't taking care of their yards. And, um, blight is, um, and this, I thought this was gonna be just a step in the right direction, a very small step, or at least a step in the right direction.
And I would voice, I, I'm very sensitive to content limitation. I, I am a huge believer in the First Amendment, in the right to speak your mind. Saying that, like Councilmember Ellen Boss, I'm also concerned that neighbors have a right to have peaceful enjoyment and not have blight. And just as we don't allow ten junk cars to sit in a front yard, I don't have a problem saying, "You, you have free speech, you can rotate four signs, whatever number we pick, and you can rotate them and have your free speech, but your neighbor doesn't have to worry about he's trying to sell his house and someone's got twenty-five signs sitting out in their lawn, and they're thinking, "Holy mackerel, I can't buy next door to this, 'cause it's gonna be a nightmare." So there's a balancing of rights here. Uh, and, and I think that with, with what the city attorney's office has done in trying to align it so that we're not content, uh, focused, is the right way to do it. And, and I think if it causes us some inconvenience as far as we have to rotate the message, we can't have all the message out there at once, that's not stepping on a free, free speech right. That's, that's saying we all have to respect that we can't have clutter, we can't have a situation that infringes upon our neighbors' rights. So I, I would echo what, what has been said in that I think this is needed, we've seen it's needed, we've all gotten the calls and complaints throughout the city. The question is, what's the best way to do it in the least restrictive way? And from what I've looked at, limiting the number, I think is okay, 'cause you can still have a, a message. Limiting it to a reasonable sign, you still can have your message. So that's where I'm battling, 'cause I am very, very much against any content limitation.
And I think, I think as council continues to chew on this, a couple of specifications that you should really focus on would be the following, right? Is the setback too far? Should it be shorter than ten feet? And there isn't, understand that there isn't a right or wrong necessarily to this, okay? And then, should there be a different setback between signs? We've suggested that signs need to be ten feet away from each other. Should they be five feet away from each other? Do we care? Do we, you know, do we just say, "Look, no more than four," regardless of whether or not they're right on top of each other, or spread out, you know, to be ten feet away from each other? So there's, you know, we, we created the framework, thinking of what would look perhaps nice, in a sense, so you don't see the congregation of a whole bunch of signs in one spot, but rather they, they'd have to be spread out. But, you know, there's opportunity for council to make adjustments if you wish to. And as I mentioned, as I mentioned, you know, earlier this evening, if council wishes to, to further digest this, and then have us bring it back at your next meeting, um, if you wanna send me some feedback between now and then, I'm happy to, to, to do that as well. So I don't want, I don't want you feel, feeling pressured that you have to make a decision tonight if you're really not comfortable with this particular item and doing that. So there are some things where sometimes I need the decision, but not, this is one where you have time.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think that I've heard anything that makes me feel pressured to make a decision tonight, but I also haven't heard anything that, um, would stop me from being able to make a decision tonight. And the two things that I think we need to address are the fact that, you know, we can't during different seasons say, "Well, it's okay to have, you know, ten signs, but the rest of the season you can only have four." So I think we need to change that number, you know, come up with a number that we're all comfortable with, no matter what time of year it is.
Right.
Um, but that there's still a number, and I would also agree with Councilmember Engels in the fact that ten feet from the right-of-way in a lot of cases is too far, and it wouldn't allow people to have that freedom of speech, because there wouldn't be a place that they could place a sign in their yard. So, um...
Maybe you cut that in half.
Cut it in half?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Um, I was, you know, looking at six feet, six feet wherever it's ten feet. And also increasing the number of signs, because I heard from several people that brought up the same thing that you brought up about, um, you know, you've got your permanent sign, your Jesus sign, and then when it's a political season, you wanna put up the candidates you support, and then what do you, who do you, do you take down to prioritize? And for example, in 2022, we're gonna have multiple elections. And, um, and, uh, so I would, I would request that we increase the number from four to a reasonable number.
What's that?
Um, I, I like, I'm going six, six, six. I didn't explain that, but...
Let me move over here a little bit.
You know, if it's, if six, I'd say, six feet from the, from the right-of-way, six signs and six feet apart.
I like four.
I was gonna say, I think the, um, the distance from the right-of-way needs to be shorter. And this is a perfect example, the people who live on Cass Street, they don't have a front yard, they have a big brick wall, you know? And that could be true in other parts of the city. I think over on, uh, Copier Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, so I think that that needs to be shorter.
Okay.
And the type of signs, the four-by-four sign, um, isn't going to be obnoxious.
Yeah.
I don't ever think the, um, the, then, I never had a problem with any of the signs being too close to the road, and when they were, they were moved, 'cause they were in violation.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, all the, all the signs that were compliant never, I thought, never looked bad because they were too close, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, you know, if somebody would like to make a motion to get that, um, you know, vote started, um, give us something to consider.
So, Mayor, and members of the city council, um, I'm hearing, you know, from Councilmember, you know, King, "We need to make a change." I'm hearing from Madam Mayor, "We need to make a change." I'm hearing from everybody that we need to make a change. I'm hearing from Councilmember Engels that, you know, the ten feet is obviously too, too much of a spacing, needs to be something smaller, Councilmembershipper suggests six feet, but maybe, maybe five feet is...
Six foot, yeah.
Maybe five feet would be a, a better compromise, especially for those areas of town like on Copier Street or on Cass Street, where there are, you know, the retaining walls and whatnot that are really close to the right-of-way. Even, there are even some on North Boulevard, where there's retaining walls right on North Boulevard that might make things a little, little complex.
Well, and, you know, some yards have a lot of frontage, right? I have a lot of frontage, for instance, but some people don't have that, right?
Right. I'm also...
Is, this is a silly question, but if there is a sidewalk, right, right now, the way our ordinance is right now, if it's a sidewalk, you can put your sign pretty much up to the sidewalk.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
So we say if there's a sidewalk, signs can go up to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
If it's a right-of-way issue where there's not a sidewalk, then it would be six feet.
Six feet is probably, if there's no sidewalk, that's very reasonable, yeah.
From the road, Councilmember?
If there's no sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm, I'm spitballing this.
Yeah, I like that, I like that.
How does that sound to you?
Sounds fine.
Okay. So I'm gonna just continue to reiterate...
So instead of a specific distance, we're looking at using our infrastructure sidewalks as a market marker, because everybody knows that. because everybody knows that, like when we're talking ten feet and six feet, I'm looking and going, you know, and trying to figure. But, um, and then the the other distance for if there isn't a sidewalk.
Right, so along the, um, you know, the edge of the sidewalk, it can't be over the sidewalk.
Right.
But along the edge of the sidewalk, not, not, um, not going over, well, and we'll clean up the language, obviously.
Okay.
Would be how we would enforce it. Or if there is no sidewalk, then it would be six feet from the, from the road.
From the road.
Now, in terms of the number of signs.
And I'm going to stop. I think it has to be from the right of way line.
From the right of way line.
Yeah.
Which would be from, from where the street and the sidewalk meet.
Yep, definitely.
So, okay. In terms of number of signs, we're hearing that, we're hearing that four might be too little. Maybe we're hearing that, you know, six or seven or eight could create blight. So the question is, is there, is there a, is there a compromise? Is five a better number than four?
I would be, I would be okay with the six signs. If you, I know.
I think six is fine.
Um, I, I don't think I've seen too many people with more than six signs, even during the busy political sign season.
And again, those signs would need to be within the spatial size as stipulated. And they would need to be ten feet apart from each other.
See, and that's what I, see, that's what I don't like is the minimum distance around, you know, um, between signs. I mean, if it makes the signs meaningless, what does it matter if I put them one inch apart?
Well, I think.
I just don't quite understand.
Part of the, part of the background for for that, again, is to take a step forward in doing what we can to sort of reduce, and again, this is content neutral. So imagine whatever you want to imagine is on the signs. Just reducing what could be perceived by others as blight or as proliferation of signs. If you have everything just congregated into one corner facing your neighbor's house, you wouldn't be able to do that if we had the spatial separation requirement within the ordinance. It provides some of that protection between disputes that you might find bubble up between neighbors, which unfortunately does happen from time to time. If you require that the signs be separated, then they have to be separated and.
So could, so could we, if we are going to say six signs, and it doesn't matter how wide your frontage is on your yard, that they need to be equal distance apart? Whatever it is for that property, it would be different for your property than it would be for my property.
Or mine, I have a smaller.
Or yours. So we're not saying it has to be ten feet or six feet.
Well, we are right now, right now.
I know we are right now, but I'm saying when we're considering a motion tonight, you know, I'm, I'm hearing you say it was done so that not all six signs are going to be crammed into one corner of the yard. If we, and you guys can create that language, but basically say that they have to be spatially distant, equal distance from one another.
But then the, so we, and we, we established what that equal distance is right now, which is ten feet. Not, this has nothing to do with the right of way. We're saying that that a sign can't be within ten feet of another sign. So it would, there would have to be a, you know, ten foot space between signs. Now, if you're saying, you know, hey, city manager, love the idea, ten feet's too far, it should be five feet, or it should be twenty feet, that's, that's the feedback I need to hear.
Here's the only problem, trying to avoid problems, is if I have a fifty-foot city lot, I'm not going to fit six signs on my frontage.
Right.
That's right. And so does somebody who has a bigger lot have more opportunity for speech?
Or do you go five feet back? Do you go, if if you, if you're saying it has to be five feet apart, then do you put three of them at, on the front and three more five feet back from the first sign?
What, what's the min, minimum size city lot? Do we go less than fifty feet? Is fifty feet about the standard?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if anyone here does, do you know? Is it fifty?
He knows, I'm sure.
To be a conforming sized lot, conforming, it needs to be in the R three, R four, fifty feet. The R two, seventy-five feet. The R one, Steve, like where you live, it's one hundred feet. We have many, many, many non-conforming sized lots in our town that are under those dimensions, many.
I mean, I would, for, I would support something like two feet, like I suppose. But I'd even, like even in my yard, you know, ten foot would limit me to, I only have two little squares that are probably twelve by twelve. So that, that would be my suggestion. You guys don't have to agree with that, but that's what I'm, that's what I would throw out there or want to see.
So six signs, two feet apart.
Unless you guys think that still looks like the, you know, the blight that you're trying to.
It should be able to fit in every lot.
Mm-hmm.
At what, thirty-six feet?
Mm-hmm.
And it, the, it would be the size, the four square feet.
Yes.
So it's not going to be a bunch of great big signs. It's going to be, you know, the standard, um, yard size size.
Or smaller, correct?
Or small.
Yeah.
Are the political signs four square feet? I'm not sure what.
Not quite.
No. You can have different sized political signs.
That's the common, but the, the common size there, yes.
Yes.
They're in the city, yeah.
Right.
It's what you see even if they're not political signs.
Who's the lucky person gets to enforce these, the new law?
He's right there.
Okay, Mike.
And we currently enforce, like I said, a thirty-page sign ordinance anyway. So I mean, he's already, he's already doing it.
Right.
I think, I do think I'd, I'd have a problem if, you know, the house, um, Dr. Dubrovic's house by me, he has many flagpoles. And sometimes if he happened to fill all those flagpoles that were attached to his porch with political flags, I would still be, um, upset if, if we decided to try to regulate those as signs, though. I mean, they could, they could all twelve be the same, you know, they, I don't know how many flagpoles he has, but there's more than six. And they could all be filled with the same political flag. And and I, you know, I don't want to see us then try to regulate that under this ordinance, which.
And at, at this point, we're not.
We're not, it's just.
Right.
Things.
Yeah.
So the, just to make sure we're all on the same page as we move forward, regardless of how people might vote this evening, it sounds like we have the semblance of an, of a, of a motion to, to move this forward as adjusted from the presentation to, uh, increase the number of total signs to six, reduce the spe, separation between the signs from ten feet to two feet, and to reduce the separation from the right of way from ten feet to the following. Six feet from the road right of way line.
If no sidewalk.
If no sidewalk. Otherwise, just off the sidewalk as long as it's not going over the sidewalk.
And and if I could, Mike, that's where we are right now, correct? You can put it up to the sidewalk without interfering.
Between sidewalk and, for example, your front porch.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Two feet apart.
And if some, if, if, I mean, that can be, if somebody likes the way I said that, can simply move it as.
A motion.
As, as a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would support this and vote, vote yes if that's, um, that's the way the ordinance was.
Would you like to make that motion?
I will make that motion then.
And I'll support it.
Councilmember King?
You go first.
You know it's random, huh, she does?
I, no, I do know that.
She takes turns.
Yes. Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries. Good discussion.
And that doesn't mean that, um, if people have, you know, whenever we do this, um, we try to listen to what people are asking and saying and try to do the thing that's best for the community at large and do the thing that's best for everybody and listen to everybody's feedback. But this is, it, it, it doesn't get carved in stone. So you always tell us this, that if sometime, if, if we see a problem with something and it needs to be tweaked, we can always revisit it in the future, hopefully not too soon.
Yeah, but if I, I mean, I agree, if this does nothing to solve the problem that we're trying to solve or this, or this takes us a step backward.
We need to talk about it again.
Then that'll become apparent in, you know, a couple of months and, or two months.
And one of the things that we'll also work on, um, over the next week or so is, is a, a sort of FAQ or release to the media that just does our best to boil it down and, and say, here's the, you know, here's the updates and here's, and here's what they mean. And maybe we'll see if we can find some graphical representations so people can sort of see it and understand it, so.
And within that, please clarify that content, including things that are vulgar or things that are very abhorrent to some people or others, cannot be regulated based on that. Because, boy, people are real unhappy about that.
Well, and I think that throughout this whole process, when it was with the Planning Commission and even here this evening, I think that there was very thoughtful discussion. And I appreciate the people who came this evening to provide that feedback that we were looking for, whether you supported it or you didn't support it. We really appreciate you taking the time to come and do that. So this is, it's really tough because, um, while you're trying to fix one problem, you're maybe, you know, somebody else may look at it like you're taking something away, and that is not the intent of this. It's to continue to make our community beautiful and respecting our neighbors. So thank you for that discussion. Okay, the next thing that we have on our agenda this evening are some commu, communications. Sandy?
Yes, it's being requested, we have a request from the Zion Lutheran Church Craft Show for their signs for the craft show.
Signs, first, first thing.
Let's talk about signs.
Sign is that, Sandy? How big is it, where's it going?
It's in the back.
And what I was thinking, oh, it's fall, it's time for the Zion Craft Show.
It is a, it's a three, um, it says two yard type signs with dimensions of three feet by three feet square in the city right of way for four days advertising their craft show on October thirteenth. So because they're asking for it in the city right of way, it has to be approved by city staff, correct?
Counsel.
And so, excuse me, it brought, it's brought before the city staff for a recommendation and now it's being, being brought to us to approve.
This is normal, we've done it many times before.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the sign request for the Zion Lutheran Church Craft Show as presented.
I'll second.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries.
Being requested to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from seven AM to eleven AM on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-one for the Toy Town Toy Trot Five K.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from seven AM to eleven AM on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-one for the Toy Town Toy Trot Five K.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries.
Being requested to approve the closure of the parking lot on Lake Street south of the Pavilion from seven AM to seven PM on October second, two thousand twenty-one for the White Pine Ride.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of the parking lot on Lake Street south of the Pavilion from seven AM to seven PM on October second for the White Pine Ride.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries.
That's all of the communications for this evening, and that takes us to some appointments.
Yes, we have several.
And we do.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Miranda Grinow to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Miranda Grinow to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries. If you wait, wait just a second. If I could please ask the audience not to have side discussions and disrupt the, uh, rest of the meeting, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Miranda Grinow to the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I will make that motion to approve the appointment of Miranda Grinow to the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Mark Lagerway to the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Mark Lagerway to the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for three-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Dale Rice to the Planning Commission representing Ward Three for a three-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make, whoa. Jinx, coax. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Dale Rice to the Planning Commission representing Ward Three for a three-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Ben Dean to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Just want to note that Ben Dean has been serving as an alternate on the ZB.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Ben Dean to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on September seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries. And before we move on to the city manager's report, I would just like to say that I think it's really exciting. I see three new people's names, uh, that have stepped forward and are willing to, uh, serve on our different committees. And I would encourage others who might be interested in serving on some of our committees where we have openings to please take a look at that. Because we certainly appreciate the volunteerism and the support of the work that keeps the city running. So thank you. Okay, city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, I realize we've been a little long in the tooth this evening,
in the tooth this evening, but we do have our city engineer here, Connie Vois, to give us just a quick update on some of the busy construction projects that we've had over the summer and what we still have going on. So Connie? Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I want to start out with Chestnut. We started Chestnut Project in mid-June. Everything was open to traffic about two weeks ago. Construction went really well. Permanent signs and pavement marking went up, and we were able to open it up a day early. Punch list items have been reviewed with MDOT and the contractor, and then we just start our closeout process of the project. So.
Love the new bike lanes, too.
Right? Nice.
It is beautiful.
Yeah, so that widened, the curb widened, and we now have the wider bike lanes through there all the way, Lee's and Chestnut. So that's really nice. The Roundabout Project at Crosby and Division started, as anybody who travels that side of town knows, about two weeks ago. Our construction is planned to be complete November 15th, and worked through some traffic issues the first day. A lot of people were very adamant they were going to go through the construction zone. We do have the side road in there for emergency vehicles, and that is for when they are running in emergency, not just for casually driving. So, but we have worked with everybody that has been trying to enter the construction zone. I mean, for the safety of the workers, we just need to be careful with that. So, and it also, the accelerated schedule that we have on the project because we want to get that open as soon as we can to traffic. So, very important that we keep traffic, and I appreciate everybody accommodating us and taking the detours. So, I know it's, it's a big thing to have a big intersection like that closed. So, also, the next one is Evert Street. So, Evert's a very large, seven-block-long project. Started that in June. All of the underground work is done. The concrete curb and flatwork on the driveways were completed already. Paving was scheduled until earlier today for Thursday. The rain is definitely setting us back. Quite a bit of that washed out, so the contractor will get that all back in place. And paving, right now, is tentatively scheduled for Monday. So that'll be nice. Soon as we get all the markings and signing up, we'll be able to open that for traffic, too, which will be nice because I know Oak Street is closed on the route to the hospital. So it'll be nice to get that back open. Stimson Street is the next project. We started that later in August. Sanitary and Water Main has a little bit more work to do. Then we'll get the curb and gutter and the flatwork in and the drive approaches, and that is scheduled for about 10 days from now. And then we'll do the paving and get that open to traffic as well. So, all of those projects will be open, November 15th is when the asphalt plants close, so we always like to be done well in front of that. So, we did have a meeting on Stimson Street on Friday. Some of the neighbors up there had a concern about the placement of one of our hydrants. There are two hydrants being placed in different locations, new locations, I should say, and the neighbors had a concern, so we had a big meeting Friday, and we are looking at a couple of alternatives. So depending on the information from that, I may be back in front of you with a change order at the next meeting, depending on how that goes. Mason and Brummer, those were last year's projects. We had an issue with grass seed taking, and the contractor got their sub back out there, and I don't know if you noticed, but they're both very green and lots of grass growing now. So we're very happy with the results of that, and we'll be able to close out both of those projects. And usually, we just have a little bit of retainage on those, so we'll get those paid off and closed out. The other project that we have, the Trailhead Project, as everybody knows, you know, we had the meetings and revisited what came back in the bid back in March and May. So we resubmitted revised plans to the DNR, and with that, they really had to get in there and review it because several of the things that were in the grant application were pulled from the project. So, they also had a change in a couple of people. Their personnel at DNR changed and COVID and them working from home. It took them quite a while to go through and review it. We did have conversations last week and the week before, and I believe we are ready to go to bid. So that was really good news. The problem was is with the clock tower changing out from picnic shelter to the clock tower. They're not considering that a shade structure because there's not picnic tables and stuff under it. So that did change the intent of what they approved the grant for. But we are going to get that out to bid, and I'll come back to you guys after we have that bid opening and let you all know how results came back.
Hopefully good.
Yes. All right. So that's all that I have. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Marcus, I'm going to turn the introduction of these resolutions over to you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The remainder of your regular agenda this evening are items that are all related in one way, shape, or form, essentially to each other. The first item is the request of consideration for a resolution that will update our fee schedule regarding transient merchants. And if you could perhaps maybe follow along with me a little bit in the, in the council communication that's in our public packet, it goes without saying that there's been some success, which is great news to celebrate with one of our newest businesses located in Cadillac, that being Long Road Distillers. And through that success, it's prompted a request for us to reconsider essentially how we provide some of the permits for transient merchants that specifically deal in food products. This evening, you'll see that there's a request to add the opportunity for there to be a monthly license and a weekly license. And subsequent to providing this information to council, I did receive feedback from a council member requesting that perhaps just to make it even simpler, instead of having a differentiation between whether the, the vehicle does or doesn't have a motor in it, we just have the fees the same. So, as a, for instance, the monthly fee is being suggested at $100 a month with the weekly fee being $50 a month. The fee is slightly different with the category being with a motor, but I'm just as happy to suggest that you keep that fee the same. If you want to keep it at $100 bucks a month and $50 bucks a month accordingly, it, it's not going to matter necessarily to the city one way or the other. In meeting with Long Road, however, you'll see that there's a recommendation of creating a third category, which you'll see in the communication says creation of new category. This would provide an option for private property owners, such as Long Road as a, for instance, to acquire an annual license that would allow them to have any peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants vending any food items, whether it's from a food truck or food cart or a stand or any similar device, essentially as, as often as they want, as many different merchants as they want, for one set fee of $1,000. This would not put any burden on any of the vendors or the merchants themselves in terms of having to come to the city for getting a permit. So as a, for instance, if, if, if Long Road, using them as the example, would like to have a food truck from Grand Rapids or Detroit or you name, you name it, come in and sell one night, if they had this sort of umbrella-type permit, which was, again, it was their idea to create this type of category, that would then cover them entirely. Now, whether or not the food truck has its health department license, that's something the city does not get involved in. We only look at inspecting the food trucks or carts to make sure that they have the proper safety-related gear, specifically through our fire department. So we would continue to do that, but we wouldn't charge anything. If Long Road down the road, you know, looks at, at trying to, you know, modulate or convert how they do things and charge for a space, they could certainly look at doing that. We're, we're not in the middle of any of those negotiations or, or deals. So, the recommendation this evening would be to create the monthly license fee, the weekly license fee, and this third category as presented. The, the, the quote-unquote "as presented" part would be to also streamline the creation of that monthly and weekly license so that they're the same regardless of whether or not you're propelled by a motor or not. So. The other part of the recommendation would be to retroactively refund, oh, well, actually, I'm jumping ahead. Sorry. I'm getting, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, different, that's the next one.
I think this is great. I, yeah, this makes it way more seamless for, for businesses. So, anybody else have some?
I, I just want to make sure we clarify because I was confused. I think it's perfect to have the, the fees the same for each category, and, and I think it's really critical that we make sure it's known if the property owner, let's use Long Road as an example, decides to use that $1,000 fee, that covers us for any inspections we have to do. That also leaves the food trucks or the vendors, they don't have to pay an additional fee.
Right.
So Long Road's able to entice them in with whatever agreement they have. And I, I just think it's important to say that $1,000 would cover whoever Long Road wants to frame per year, and I think that's a great, it's $2.70 a day for 365 days. I think that's a great idea.
Well, and, and I think that, you know, that $2.70 a day, if Long Road wanted to just even charge them a nominal fee to be able to, you know, vend on their property, then they might still get some of the $1,000 back, too. So, win-win.
Win-win. It's a really good, good solution. So, did you want to, or, okay, then I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the fee schedule for business license.
To clarify.
Based with the amendment, combining one and two to be the same fee.
And I would support that motion.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes. Motion carries.
So, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item really is five items in one. There's one communication. City of Cadillac, believe it or not, was a very early adopter of the opportunity the state of Michigan created because of COVID and the struggle that a lot of businesses that are in the food and beverage industry were having when it created the Social District and Social Zone Program. I want to say that we were somewhere between number 10 and number 15 in the, in the state of Michigan for adopting the program. However, up until about a month ago, we hadn't had anyone actually apply to participate in the program, and we have, give or take, about a dozen or so eligible businesses that are within our social district and zone that could participate. Long Road Distillers happened to be the first that came in. Councilmember King and Miranda Gunrow were very, very helpful in getting out there and soliciting applications from people to say, you know, and to re-explain to them, even though we provided, you know, our bureaucratic 60-page, 75-page, whatever it is.
Sure, they read the whole thing.
Document, exactly. You know, basically, it all boiled down to two pages, which, which they had to fill out. And then, that's just for us. And then, of course, there, there is a lot more that, that has to go to the state, but we're gonna, we're gonna make them sort of a little kit that has a check-off box. Here's the documents that you have to have, and here's a copy of the forms that you have to fill out for the state of Michigan to make it, to make it seamless. And then, once they apply, they, they should get their, their amended license back in about two weeks. But basically, what we have before you this evening, because of that effort, are five different establishments. So coupled with Long Road, you'll now have six establishments, a part of our zone. There's been communication with the Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Visitors Bureau. They're very eager to start working and creating some type of marketing and branding, even though we're sort of in the, you know, entering into fall, but some kind of marketing and branding initiative to help direct people to understand that this is now going to be available in Cadillac. Obviously, they can't get too far ahead of themselves because until they get that amended license, they're not, they're not even able to sell to be a part of this program. But it's all, it's all coming. As I was getting ahead of myself a little bit, because this is right on the heels of what Long Road just went through, and because we're also trying to incentivize some of the other establishments to participate, we are looking at asking city council this evening to consider a motion that would waive the city's application fee until January 1 of 2022, and also to reimburse that same fee back to Long Road Distillers. And then, we're looking for city council to approve a motion that would accept the application for Clam Lake Beer Company, Herman's Cafe and Restaurant, Raven Social, Roaring Twenties Saloon, and Willow Market and Meats. And the only other caveat to all of that is to advise that the city is planning on making sure that we have the true and correct corporate name that's on the MLCC, the Liquor Control Commission, license that these establishments currently have. Because when we fill out the resolution forms that we have from the state of Michigan for each of these companies, we need to make sure that those names match up. So if, as a, for instance, if Herman's Cafe and Restaurant isn't what's on that liquor control license, we're going to make sure that what's on that liquor control license is the true and correct.
You're gonna, you're gonna, okay.
The right name for that, for that body. I just wanted full transparency, city council to know that while you're being asked to approve a resolution for Herman's Cafe, it may be for Lake Cadillac Resort LLC or whatever that corporate name might be.
Oh, and as a reminder to everybody, that, that fee that we are going to waive is $250. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And there's, there, you know, the, the, these businesses still have fees associated with Michigan Liquor Control, which is also $250, and then that is a reoccurring fee that becomes their burden, you know, every year that they choose to continue to participate. So.
I, I think this is a very good example of, there was excitement, but fear because of government bureaucracy.
Right.
And when we sat down with the different people that have applied now and said, what are your biggest concerns? It was really, we want to do it, we want to buy into it, but the city fee for them right now is just another lump with everything else they have to invest in, and really because we've copied the ordinance of other cities, that we don't have a lot into it.
Right.
So to incentivize them to do it before January 1, we end up with huge participation. So I think it really benefits us tremendously.
Yeah, good job. Good job.
That is good work.
So, in the communication, I do provide a couple of.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the first motion to waive the city's downtown Cadillac Social District permit application fee until January 1, 2022, and for equity to reimburse that fee to Long Road Distillers, who was the first to participate.
I'll support that. Excellent.
Councilmember Alambas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes. Motion carries.
I'd make the motion to approve the local government unit resolution of approval for a social district permit for the aforementioned businesses as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes. Motion carries. Next.
Did we name those? Did we mention, just to be clear, that's Clam Lake, Herman's, Raven Social, Roaring Twenties, and The Willow, as well as the, that's a Long Road that we, that we already have.
Yeah.
That's a nice group of, of businesses for social districts.
It is. Okay. At this time, we will go ahead and open the floor for our final public comment. If anyone would like to add anything.
I think you people done a nice job on the sign thing, but I, I missed the, the size of the signs that can be placed.
Four. We'll get it all out, yeah.
Four by four?
Four by four.
No, no.
Pardon?
Four by four, four square feet.
Oh, for that. Four square feet?
Uh, that, that size sign is not enough for me to express my opinion and free speech. Four-foot square. So I disagree with that size.
Okay. Again, we're not going to interact?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But anyway, I, I can't express my free, freedom of speech on a four-foot square sign. And another thing, I've got a white flag out there because this country surrendered to the Taliban. And I also have 13 small flags representing those military people that he caused to be killed. Are they okay? That's all I have to say. But my main concern is if, I can't express my freedom of speech in a four-foot square sign.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we will close public comment. And I think that's all we. And I think that's all we have this evening. Anybody have anything for good of the order?
All right.
Awesome.
I saw something that was really heartwarming. I know, I know we've been long.
Got to be something.
Sorry, but.
Warm our hearts, yeah.
One of my neighbors puts up a Halloween display, and they keep adding things from, you know, now all the way through the holiday, and I saw a posting today on one of the Cadillac group sites where a five-year-old child dropped off a thank-you sign and some flowers thanking them for this, the display, and how much he enjoyed it. And whoever that little boy was, thank you for representing the heart and soul of this community, and to the folks, my neighbors around the corner, thanks for posting that so people could see what kind of children we're raising here in Cadillac, so I just wanted to say that.
The Halloween people. That's nice, that was a nice touch.
Yeah, yes. Okay, if nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Good meeting. Cody, very nice to meet you.
It was.
Thank you.